Call to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Gah, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Thank you, President Decker. There are no changes.
Okay, Commissioners, the one thing that I would like to extract right now and just hold is the proclamation for Lemonade Day until the Lemonade Day people are present. They're supposed to be here at 4:45, and we had them on the administrative early, and I told them I would hold it until they arrive, so. And then they can do a little bit of a presentation, or just give the public some information about Lemonade Day. Any questions on the Order of Business? Now I look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion on the Order of Business? Not all in favor of the Order of Business as amended? State aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss with staff? Hearing no questions for staff on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion.
So move.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. With a second. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Not a vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into our non timetable agenda this evening, and first item up is for Mr. Gah, Chapter 32 Amendment, Retirement Amendment.
Thank you, President Decker, and Commissioners. At the last meeting on June 18th, this ordinance revision was introduced, and the first reading was approved, and the public hearing was held, so this is the second reading and approval. To kind of recap, this is the Retirement Plan Chapter. The city has had multiple retirement plans over the years, and recently just changed as we went into the 2019 year. And really, the major change in this is it clarifies if an employee retires or leaves, and they're covered under one retirement system, and they come back later on in whatever capacity, they would be in the current retirement system. So this just clarifies that as far as that goes, and that was the major change.
My understanding also with that is if they are rehired within a 30-day period...
Correct.
...they can stay on their original.
Classifies the separation time period and status.
Any questions for Mr. Gah on the Chapter 32 Amendment? If I remember correctly, we did have a public hearing, but I will open it up for the public if there are any employees or anyone from the public that wishes to come forward, discuss the Chapter 32 Amendment. Please come forward, state your name and your concerns, or any comments. Seeing there's no one from the public with any concerns with Chapter 32 Amendment, Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Gah or staff on the Chapter 32 Amendment, Ordinance Number Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on Ordinance Number 1676.
Mr. President, I move to approve second reading and final passage of Ordinance Number 1676.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. I see our Lemonade Day entourage is here. Is this the full group?
There's some more coming.
Okay, we'll hold off until the rest of the group comes. Okay. We'll move into reports, Mr. Gah.
I think you skipped Item B.
Oh, the landmark. Yeah, my fault. Okay. Local landmark program, and that'll be Mr. Furman. Apologize for skipping over your landmark program recognition.
Oh, that's quite all right. Mr. President, Commissioners, the Dickinson Historic Preservation Commission, which was created in 2013, has as part of its function, quote, "to develop and participate in programs to increase public awareness of the value of historic preservation and historic properties." Following this directive, in 2008, the HPC sought to establish a local landmark program, which was proposed to and approved by the City Commission in January 2009, and the first five properties were nominated and approved, with the sixth property added to our local landmark registry in 2012. However, no formal recognition beyond designation by the Historic Preservation Commission was sought. Tonight, the HPC seeks the City Commission's formal recognition of the six existing local landmarks, and to also recognize that property now known as Fire Station Number One as a newly designated Dickinson City local landmark, that recognition being via the resolution now before the Commission, which the Historic Preservation Commission asked the City Commission to adopt.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Furman. Any questions on the Resolution 17-2019?
Mr. Furman, how do you determine which property should be included in the historic preservation?
We're this National Register, you have to have a minimum of 50-years-old property, but we have more leeway in the local landmark, so this one is designated as both architectural and also it's tied to local history and seat of government.
Just about all of the brick buildings along Villard Street South here would qualify for that, wouldn't they?
They certainly qualify, at least under the 50-years. Several of them, I think, are of architectural significance. One of the reasons that we are asking the Commission to formally recognize is that to make, help make the public aware of this local landmark program, we feel it's a good venue to bring it to the Commission, have it recognized. It gets a little bit more press that way, and hopefully it'll encourage business owners to, or building owners, I should say, to approach us with the idea of nomination for other properties. As you say, there are a significant number of those brick blocks that represent that building boom between about 1900 and 1912, 1914.
Would the Railroad Depot qualify?
Yes, it would. One of the things about local landmark or even National Register is it does have to have the blessing of the building owner. And so, we certainly have done some research on the depot, and if BNSF were interested, I'm sure the Historic Preservation Commission would say that would be a great property to add.
They would, I'm assuming that they would qualify for some grants out there sometime being designated historic preservation.
Well, if they were, if they were National Register, there's always a possibility along those lines. There hasn't been a lot in the way of federal dollars for that of late, but there are certain programs that come out of either private foundations or state historical society from time to time.
Thank you.
Mr. Furman, once they are designated a landmark, are there restrictions then on any improvements?
No restrictions at all. Even National Register, there's no restrictions. You may lose, as a National Register property, which our original six are, you could lose your National Register status, but there's no penalties involved. There's a lot of misconceptions on local landmarks and National Register that there are indeed restrictions, so I appreciate you asking that question.
I was just aware of property owners in the Virginia area outside of Washington, D.C., when they were trying to modify their historically landmarked brownstones, and they had to go through a bunch of hoops to...
That can be more likely a local municipal regulation. That can be somewhat more restrictive. They don't want you, you know, tearing down Mount Vernon.
Right.
They're kind of picky that way.
It's good sometimes to have a little bit of a check and balance.
I agree, absolutely.
Any other questions for Museum Director Furman? Thank you, and I'd look for a motion on 17-2019.
Move to approve.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Still waiting on a few?
Yeah, but if you need...
Oh, no, no, we can. We'll move into Mr. Gah and his reports.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Several, just little highlights of things that are in your packet. As a summary, the first is a list of the Southwest Regional Grants. It's just a little bit of public notification. Those come from cities, community groups, volunteer fire departments, what have you. This year, we had 250, just under $250,000 in requests. The budget amount is 50,000, so the 50,000 was divided up between 22 different projects and different amounts. All very important in our small regional communities. These all go outside of the Dickinson area, so 22 projects, $50,000. In the Senior Citizens Grant, which follows right up, there were, that one wasn't near as difficult. There was $50,000 budgeted for that. We had about 78,000 in requests, so we ended up awarding the, just right at 48,000 is how the math came out, to 14 projects there. And of course, we've seen some thank you cards. We have one tonight that I'll read you here in a few minutes, and those folks really, really appreciate that. Two good programs that some of our sales tax revenue is dedicated to by you, the Commission, in each annual budget. Also in your package, just an annual report from Southwest Water for their 2018 year for year review. A little, little update on the Renaissance Zone. The Commission has taken some action on that lately to expand it to a five-year extension. That was granted, so the Renaissance Program is now through 2024, I believe July of 2024. And to report, Steve Josephson's working on the, he works on that, coordinates that in the Planning Department. There is a project in what was the already established downtown area, and of course, the new map slid it down Villard a little bit, and there were some properties in mind that could really use some help. One of those is being purchased and will be a Renaissance Zone project. Stephen's working on that application right now, so that's good news. The program is being used with the new, new map already. And then the last thing, a thank you card. This was for one of the Southwest Grants. The Manning Community Club wants to thank you for the $1,000 grant to help purchase four metal picnic tables. Your consideration is very much appreciated. The tables were put to good use for our community barbecue on Sunday, June 23rd. Respectfully, the members of the Manning Community Club. So again, a little bit of money goes a long ways sometimes, and that's it for my reports. If you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gah on his reports? Thank you again, Mr. Gah. Move into Public Works. Public Works Director Zurov, you have a task order?
Yes, President Decker and Commissioners. The first task order is for, it's wrong in your packet, the first one is for the 2019 Urban Mill and Overlay Project. That refers to Task Order 2018-01-2, and this is to provide construction engineering services with Highlands Engineering and Survey. And that's for City Project 2019-01, Urban Mill and Overlay Project. And that includes 10th Avenue West, and 15th Street, 21st Street, and 12th Street West from Hillside Drive to State Avenue. The total cost for the construction administration's task order is $160,000, $370,000, and City Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Any questions for Mrs. Zurov on the task order? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on Task Order Number 201801-02.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve? With a second. Any further questions, comments on this task order? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. The next one is also a task order with Highlands Engineering, but it is for the 2019 City Mill and Overlay Project, and this is Task Order 189325-02, and it's also to provide construction engineering services for the city project 201900. This project includes portions of Fairway Street, 9th Street along with portions of 1st Avenue, Fox Drive, Park Avenue, 4th Avenue West, Park Street, 5th Avenue West, and Hillside Drive. This project is starting right away, and the full cost for the task order is $169,565, and City Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mr. Zurov on Task Order 189325-02?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the task order.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Zurov? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The next couple items are for truck bodies. The first one is a single axle truck body and associated systems. We've already purchased in the chassis, so this is just the bodies for these trucks. So the Public Works Department is requesting approval to purchase the dump body and associated systems, along with options 1, 2, 3 for Northern Truck Equipment, for a total of $85,025. They have their low-cost proposal and a bid exception for minor and acceptable city cities. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mrs. Zurov on this purchase of equipment for Public Works? Mrs. Zurov, this was an item that was budgeted.
Correct.
Yep. Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion. We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments for Mrs. Zurov? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The next one is the request to approve the purchase for the dump body and associated systems, along with options 1 and 2 for Northern Equipment, for a total of $75,005. This is for the tandem axle dump truck chassis that we've already purchased. Staff recommends approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Zurov on this equipment purchase? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on this equipment purchase.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the truck body.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further comments or questions for Mrs. Zurov on this purchase? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The next item for your consideration is a resolution. This is for the Clean Water Act Loan, SRF Loan. This resolution lets me be the signatory for the SRF loan application in subsequent form. Right now, this is for the Lift Station 1 Project. Lift Station has already been awarded, and of course, this is for the Clean Water SRF Loan and Project. Mr. Kubis had done this prior, since he's been out quite a bit, and trying to get this loan into the Department of Health, and would ask that I be approved as a signatory also, so I can keep this question.
This is Resolution 18-2019, allowing Mr. Zurov to be the signator on this loan application. Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on 18-2019.
So move.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Zurov? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is, we have a purchase here for a wood burner. Prowse?
Good mor, good afternoon, President Decker and Commissioners. Looking, the solid waste and recycling departments looking at purchasing a portable wood waste burner for our tree waste out at our landfill. Currently, we're paying $525 an hour to chip up our trees and debris, and we have zero outlet for that material once it's used. After doing countless hours of research, looking for portable wood waste burners, every website was leading me to a company called Air Burners. I requested a quote from them for a Model S220 for the cost of $127,651 delivered to our facility, and I am asking for your approval for a 2019 capital purchase item that was budgeted at $130,000.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Prowse?
Mr. Prowse, what would a wood grinder cost if the city purchased it?
Significantly more than this price. If you were looking at a tub grinder, you're probably going to be in anywhere from $3,000 to $500,000 range. Very high maintenance type item, though, because of the chipper arms wear quickly.
There were a few people that used the chips and everything, and, you know, they were, worked pretty well for them, but like you said, it probably doesn't, not enough, only charging only, what, $5 a truckload?
It's $15 a ton. It's very, very cheap, and honestly, the material that's coming off, we, first off, we create way too much material, but we will never sell that much. And I don't see a beneficial to the city to chip it, turn around, and bury it right back into our facility.
What kind of income was generated last year, say?
Under $1,000.
$100,000?
Under $1,000.
Under $1,000? Not $100,000, huh?
No, well under $1,000 in wood chips.
A lot of wood chips, $100,000.
Well, we can get it for $15 a ton.
I'd be looking at a revenue source if it was over $100,000.
There you go. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Prowse? I know we had discussed this in the past, a couple budget, or at least last in 18, we had talked about.
Yes, towards the latter part of 18, and then we did put it in our 19 budget. As we were working through our Title V Air Quality Permit with the Department of Environmental Quality, we also used these specifications through that permit as an example of what we were looking for, so.
Does this piece of equipment require somebody to be specially trained?
You have to have plume certification or opacity certification, and there is two of us currently in the department that have that.
Maybe you could explain the certification.
So basically, it's observing the plumes that are coming off of this unit. This unit is approved in the state of Florida and California. It has a minus 2% plume, or efficiency, deficiency, and it'll, we'll pass all of our air quality standards with this unit, as long as we continue to burn wood waste and nothing else. And basically, what we have to do is go downwind and monitor the smoke coming off of the
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Prowse on this wood waste burner? Hearing no other questions, I'd look for a motion on the wood waste burner.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments for Mr. Prowse on this purchase? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right, we'll proceed into proclamation for Lemonade Day, and before I make the proclamation, I would invite any members of the Lemonade Day Committee, if they would want to come forward, and if they have any kind of promotion, or just kind of let the community know what's happening. And Ms. Culver looks like she's raring to go.
I'll just take it. I didn't know I was going to get to speak to you, but this is even better.
I think we need all the kids up there.
Oh, yeah, come on. And the volunteers.
Yep.
Just please state your name for the...
Oh, my name is Katie Culver. I'm the City Director for Lemonade Day, and this is the first year we're bringing this program to Dickinson, and it's an experiential program that teaches children how to be an entrepreneur by breaking it down to the very simple task of a lemonade stand. So we're super excited to have this be an investment for Dickinson's youth.
And how many people have, right now, have signed up?
We have about 30 stands.
Okay.
And it will be on July 20th.
July 20th?
Yep.
And I will be the final judge?
For the tasting contest.
On the tasting, so...
Absolutely, we're so excited.
It'll be a very interesting day, and I'm very excited. And I see that they announced, too, that you had a lemonade stand winner.
That is for the building competition?
Right, for the building.
Yep, so Bush Lumber sponsored that competition, and they got to submit their stand designs, and we selected a winner from that, and then they paid for all of their supplies for that winner's stand.
Okay, we have one young man. I think he's part of this, too, so he's...
Oh, yeah, bring him on.
Mr. President, probably since this, it'll be the first and only time they'll want to watch our City Commission meetings. Should they introduce themselves, just individually?
Sure, individually, yes.
Yep.
My name is Ezekiel Button.
Welcome.
My name is Harper Metzer.
Welcome.
My name is Cooper Orton.
Welcome.
My name is Emerson Lee.
Welcome.
My name is Tristan Orton.
Welcome.
My name is Eli Ash.
Welcome tonight to all of you, and it is exciting to see these young entrepreneurs here that are excited to proceed with this very special day on July 20th. I know Bismarck just held theirs, what, about two weeks ago?
Yep, they had theirs, yep.
Two weeks ago, so great turnout.
Mr. President, I just want to say a couple things. First of all, thanks to Ms. Culver, who has put in countless amount of hours in getting this program started. She really was, I would say, an instrumental leader for bringing this to Dickinson, so props to you. And I know I see some volunteers out there, Jarmai Thorpe and Danielle Kik, two very big instrumental volunteers in this program as well, and I, you know, it's, it's one thing to see the excitement of the day and how successful things go, but it's another to actually be involved in the hours of dedicated volunteer work that these people have been doing for months to, to get this going. So big kudos to you and the gang for really working hard and putting your feet to the ground to get this started. It's going to be amazing.
Thank you. We hope so, and we think so.
Yep.
All right, any other comments for our young entrepreneurs or the volunteers? Not, I will read the proclamation. So, "The City of Dickinson, North Dakota proclaims Lemonade Day in Dickinson. I, Mayor Scott Decker, have proclaimed July 20th, 2019, Lemonade Day in Dickinson for the first year. More than 40 youth throughout the community are expected to participate by setting up their lemonade stands across the city. Lemonade Day is a free, community-wide program that introduces youth to entrepreneurship by teaching them how to start and own and operate their own lemonade stands. After youth have completed the Lemonade Day curriculum, they are prepared for the real-world experience of owning their own lemonade business. Youth are encouraged to spend some, save some, and share some of their profits by giving back to the community that has supported them. More than 13 sponsors have teamed up to bring Lemonade Day to Dickinson, including the Dickinson Area Chamber of Commerce, Optimist Club, The Real Estate Company, Hampton Inn and Suites, Titan Energy Services, Wells Fargo, American Bank Center, Bush Lumber, Cornerstone Bank, Dakota Community Bank and Trust, Dakota Sign Works, Gate City Bank, and U.S. Bank. On Lemonade Day, everyone has an important role to play in supporting our youth. Wherever you're mentoring a youth, hosting a stand, or purchasing lemonade, the entire community can be involved in supporting our young entrepreneurs. To find out more of this information, please visit their Lemonade Day Stand website at lemonade day.org. And I hereby proclaim Lemonade Day will be July 20th of 2019. And I would look for a motion to approve..."
So move.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. All in favor of proclaiming July 20th, 2019, Lemonade Day, state aye.
Aye.
Signed into proclamation, hand that to Mr. Gah. Thank you all for showing up.
Would you like to get a picture? We would love to get a picture.
All right.
With your volunteers as well? Yeah, yeah.
Come up behind us here. Yep, come around the back, yep. Yeah, right here. It's a great, that's actually a great spot, so. There you go. Everybody squishin', yep. Yep, yeah, she's, get on your tippy toes. Got it? All right. One more for the paper. All right. All right, thank you very much.
You want one more?
Oh, you want one more? Okay. No. All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good luck, kid.
Yep, it's five o'clock. We have a timetable this evening, and it's a public hearing for rezone of the Evangelical Bible Church subdivision. Mr. Gah?
It may be beneficial if we do seven B first because it actually leads into this.
The annexation?
Yeah, so I, I could give you the, kinda the overview of seven B and then both first timetable events, and then you could hold the hearing, um, 'cause we do kinda need to do the annexation first.
Okay, so, item two, then, the final plat for the Evangelical Bible Church subdivision?
They, they will all fall, it's item seven B annexation, and then the rezoning, and then the final plat.
Okay. So, let's, uh, okay, let's just jump into that quick. We'll do the annexation.
So this is a, a property these, these next three items relate to. Uh, it's the Evangelical Bible Church subdivision, and this is actually the church property up in the neighborhood of Twenty-Ninth Street West and Sixth Avenue West. Uh, they, some of this is new and some of this is a cleanup. A few years ago, they purchased some property, uh, to the north of the church building. Uh, they are now purchasing some additional property. Uh, they're, they're on the line, so this is outside the city limits, so they have requested this, that all of the property that they're, they would own would be annexed. This is voluntarily requested. Um, so this is, this is the plat, what it would look like. It also includes a part of the right-of-way that would expand Sixth Avenue West if ever needed, and all of the land in that area currently is owned by the same property owner, so, so there's good potential for this being additional growth on the north side of the city, uh, if possible. So the first action would be to annex the property, and then the public hearing deals with zoning it for use by the, the church, and then this, uh, the last action item would be to take all of the property that's owned by the church and put it in one, one plat, so that would be the final plat.
Okay. Just for, uh, cleaning up the, uh, we have on ours as a resolution, Mrs. Benstock, you have it listed on as an ordinance. Um, which one is it? In, in the memo, it's an ordinance, and on the, um, itinerary, it's a resolution.
The, the annexation will be a resolution.
Okay.
The, the rezoning will be an ordinance, and then the final plat will be a resolution.
Okay, so it's a resolution for seven B. Okay, so that'll be Resolution nineteen dash twenty nineteen for the annexation.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions for Mr. Gah on this resolution? Not, I'd look for a motion on nineteen dash twenty nineteen.
So move.
We have a motion with a second to approve. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution is approved. We will move then into the timetable.
Captain Decker?
Yes.
Now, I'll have to come back also on August sixth at four thirty, just to make sure, if you read that number three, that I'll come back on August sixth to make sure that, that there's no focus.
Right. Yep, that's fine. So then we'll move into the timetable. Mr. Gah?
Uh, again, this, this is related to the rezoning. Uh, this, you'll need a public hearing on this one, but this is the rezoning, uh, for this church property. And then item number two would be the plat also for the church property.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gah on the rezone? Not, we'll open up the public hearing. If anybody from the public wishes to come forward, has any comments on the rezone of the Evangelical Bible Church subdivision, please state your name.
Uh, good evening. My name is Steve Rude, I'm with AE2S on behalf of the applicants here. Uh, Mr. Gah gave a pretty good summary of the situation. There was some strange land acquisition and, um, activities in the past, and, uh, now they have an opportunity to, and we're trying to clean that up, plus they wanna pick up another three and a half or so acres, however much this was, what, three point nine acres, um, attach it to their current properties that they own. Um, they have an opportunity to get this property right now before the current owner, um, you know, passes on or, or sells that property, so it's just a, an opportunity to pick up ground. They don't have any plans for it at the time right now, so. Um, and this actually ties into the next piece to the north, which has kind of been an island for thirty-some years, and so they're providing, we're, the current landowners actually got, finally going to provide legal access to another piece of ground that he had sold years ago, so it's just a big cleanup.
Any questions? Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else from the public have any comments or questions on ordinance sixteen seventy-eight, which is a rezone of the Evangelical Bible Church subdivision? Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Gah, or, planning, planning and zoning is not here, so, Mr. Gah or Mrs. Carlson on sixteen seventy-eight? We have no questions, I'd look for a motion on sixteen seventy-eight.
So move.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on sixteen seventy-eight? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on sixteen seventy-eight. Next item up is task order, uh, excuse me, I'm reading the wrong area, is the final plat of the Evangelical Bible Church subdivision, and this is a resolution. This will be Resolution twenty dash twenty nineteen. Mr. Gah?
This is just what we said before, um, it, it relates to that. Um, and then I do wanna clarify, we, the, uh, public hearing, the rezone, that was the first reading in a public hearing. We will bring it back for a second reading, just to clarify that. Um, and it, and it did say that, but I don't think I hit on that, Mr. Josephson reminded me, uh, so we will see that one again. This final plat, this, this can be final, um, and again, just, uh, all the cleanup and, and makes, uh, the property that's, belongs to the church one plat.
Any questions for Mr. Gah on this final plat? Again, this is Resolution twenty dash twenty nineteen. We know questions or comments for Mr. Gah, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve? With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote, Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a five-ten public hearing, and this is for a special use permit of a compassionate care center dispensary. This was seen by planning and zoning earlier this, or late in June, and they'll still come forward, Mr. Gah?
Yes, that is correct. This would be a public hearing, but just to preface it a little bit, this is for a dispensary location at, uh, three-one-eight Twenty-Fourth Street East. Uh, again, it has, uh, this is a special use permit. Um, there, there was some, uh, support from the neighbors, um, in that, uh, they think it's an appropriate use. This will be new construction, uh, in the area. Uh, really, the only concerns that were voiced during this is that it is a somewhat of a side street that we, uh, the condition's not the best, uh, so they, they were a little concerned about increased traffic, so as a city staff, we'll keep an eye on that. And then also, it was voiced that sometimes there's some loading and unloading there, uh, so again, additional traffic concerns, uh, that as this, uh, moves forward, if approved, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it and address those. Those are all reasonable, uh, concerns that we can address.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah on Resolution twenty-one dash twenty nineteen? This is a public hearing for a special use permit for compassionate care center dispensary. I will now open up the public hearing for the special use permit of the compassionate care center dispensary. You have any comments, questions, or concerns about this dispensary, please come forward, state your name. Anyone from the public? Anyone with any concerns? Seeing no one has any concerns about this special use permit, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions about Resolution twenty-one dash twenty nineteen? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on twenty-one dash twenty nineteen.
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing no questions will vote, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have one other item in planning I think we can take care of before the five fifteen, so, Mr. Gah, we have a final plat from Museum Drive subdivision.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Uh, I've got the, the plat up there, uh, for you to view. Um, this is, this was one of those interesting things that the engineering staff discovered several months ago, um, in the Museum Drive subdivision, and I think this subdivision started in the early seventies, but if you drive along Twelfth Street and look across from the museum, you'll see fences, and you'll see sheds, which is not abnormal, uh, and some trees, but you'll notice that there's no such thing as a straight line. It's a zigzagging of fences and, and sheds, and, and what was fairly easily discovered is there were a lot of encroachments. There wasn't a lot of clarity on where the back property line was, so where some of those fences are, uh, are correct on their property, some of them aren't. So, uh, I guess there's two approaches. When you, you see an encroachment in the city right-of-way, you can send them a letter and say, hey, we need to move that. Um, or in this case, the, the engineering staff got creative and said, you know, we really don't need, we have an awful lot of right-of-way there, we really don't need it, so how about let's decide what we need, let's have it surveyed out, and indeed, at, at no expense and really no work, uh, to the property owners, um, and, and let them have that area that they're using, and that's, that's appropriate, so there is enough right-of-way there for a, a sidewalk or trail in the future, uh, and enables that. I'll have to tell you that in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, you wouldn't have thought it was the nice way out initially. Uh, there was a lot of concern voiced by the, the property owners. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did a very good job addressing those concerns, and so one of the things I think you should know is there's a, a little bit of contingency in this that, uh, that was given, is that this is approved, it cleans up the back property lines, but if you look at that plat, you can see that the sidelines don't necessarily match. So, uh, once the, the lines are in place, if a property owner wants to voluntarily replat their, their area, have it recorded correctly, they may do so. There's typically a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee for that. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission has suggested with this proposal that be waived through the end of two thousand and nineteen. Um, after that, they would have to, to pay the fee, but this gives them the opportunity to shore that up if they do desire, and there was, that was really the big concern. Um, so, uh, again, the Planning and Zoning Commission makes that recommendation, and staff supports that, that, uh, with this final plat would be those contingencies.
And I think that was the, uh, and Mr. Frederick can refresh my memory, uh, that was the only contingency that we had, was the waiver of that fee till the end of two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, it just allowed them to make their lot one lot.
Right.
So, properly record it, 'cause there's been a lot of split lots over there, so.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Gah? This is the final plat, and we, um, had a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning, but I will open it up to the public if there's anyone here that has any concerns about this final plat. Anyone from the public? Anyone with any concerns? Seeing there are no concerns, this is Resolution twenty-two dash twenty nineteen, be the final plat of the Museum Drive subdivision, and I would, if, Commissioners, do you have no more questions or concerns, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a five-fifteen timetable, and we have a presentation this evening by the Friendship Park representatives, and that'll be Mr. Selinger and Mrs. Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker. My name's Jordan Selinger, and I have Sarah Carlson with me. I am here today on behalf of the Dickinson Area Community Foundation and Friendship Park, uh, to talk to you a little bit about whether or not we can get the, the city support in building this park, this inclusive playground for the Dickinson community. Um, I'll let Sarah talk in a little bit to go into a little bit more of the details of why the park is needed and, and a few more specifics about the park. Um, but just to give you a little bit of background, so, the, the Dickinson Area Community Foundation is set up under the, the umbrella of the North Dakota Community Foundation. Our role is to help, uh, uh, community members and groups like the group that Sarah, uh, heads to help bring about quality of life projects in Dickinson. Um, about a year and a half ago, uh, Sarah and a group came to us and wanted our, our help in helping to facilitate this project for the community. Uh, since that time, we've gotten quite a bit of work done as far as figuring out what, uh, projected co- uh, cost of the park will be. Um, we've got a couple different phases that you'll see in those brochures there, um, but just to give you a couple numbers to start, the first phase, which includes the park and parking lot and a road, uh, will cost about nine-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Right now, we're at a little over two-hundred-thousand dollars in what we have in the North Dakota Community Foundation account plus pledges. We've got a two-hundred-thousand-dollar commitment from the Dickinson Parks and Rec, uh, along with the commitment of the land for the park, um, and so we're here today to ask you for, well, initially, this was brought up to, to ask for the full fifty-thousand-dollar Southwest Regional Grant, um, is our hope that the city will consider a, a gift in the area of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to help, uh, facilitate this project. Um, you know, one thing that's, um, just to go off a little bit, too, um, when I was younger and going through high school and graduating, um, the big talk of the town was, you know, outmigration and, and how are you gonna get kids back to us? Um, how are you gonna get people to come back to Dickinson? Um, now, through some of the presentations that our city officials have made, now that conversation has turned to, okay, how do we build this quality of life for Dickinson? Uh, this park is one of those ways that we do that, um, and it's, it's a great thing for the community, it'll be a great asset, and, and I'll let Sarah tell you more about why that is.
Hello, President Decker and members of the commission, thank you for welcoming me. Um, I am here to represent, um, families and the committee that we've formed, um, that is made up of experts. Um, I want you to just journey along- I want you to just journey along with me for just a minute. So I am a bit of a champion for people with disabilities. I work at Able Incorporated for my full-time job and hold a leadership position there. I also work for Family Voices of North Dakota and Pathfinder Services of North Dakota, which are both organizations that support people with disabilities. I serve on both state and federal boards that help create policy to support people with disabilities. The main reason that I became involved in this project is my son. I have a six-year-old, his name is Beckett, and Beckett has severe disabilities. And there's a great little spiel about Beckett in the folder that I gave you, so I won't spend your time talking about him, but I could, and I would do my mom role to be, to do that. The world of disability has not been unfamiliar to me before Beckett. My sister has severe disabilities, she's my older sister, and she was institutionalized as a child. And if you could just journey with me, one of the most common questions that parents of children with disabilities get is, what are your goals for your child? So I want you to just think about that for a second. And I, when I think about that for Beckett, I want to answer in ways that are about him being a Nobel Prize winner, or him being an inventor of adaptive equipment that helped make it easy for people who use wheels in this world, or for him to have true friendships, not just kindness bestowed on him, but true friendships. But oftentimes, when that question is asked of me, I'm meant to think about his deficits. But I'm afraid that when I say, I wish Beckett could walk, I wish Beckett could talk, I wish that Beckett could see, I'm afraid that when I say this, I'm also saying that I wish I did not have a child that cannot walk, talk, or see. Do I spend too much time and efforts focusing on his deficits? The world of inclusivity is missing in some pieces. As you journey with me, I want to just talk about a few of the circumstances that we've had just in the last week when it comes to accessibility. Beckett and I are out in this community a lot. We go to a lot of things because he should be involved, and he has friends. And we went to the rodeo, and there's really no spot for a wheelchair at the rodeo. He sat in front of the bleachers because there's really not a wedge for him to go. We went to the family fun day, and the majority of the activities for kids there were jumping things, air-inflatable things, and Beckett can't do any of that without me being in the jumping castle with him and helping him jump. Yesterday, we went to the Midora Musical, and they invited all of the kids to get on the stage, but there's like 100 steps for me to get from the place where the wheelchairs are down to the stage. And so even though all of these things are incredibly welcoming, and we have a wonderful supportive community that says hi to Beckett, and we have friendly faces, you really can't get involved in them, and so we want to change that with a playground. A playground, at the very minimum, should welcome every single kid, because play fosters learning and play fosters connection, and that's where we came up with the name of the park. It's Friendship Park. It's not Disability Park. We don't want just kids with disabilities coming. We want all kids of all economic classes, kids who use wheelchairs, kids who are deaf or hearing impaired, kids who are blind or have vision impairment, kids who need support with their immune system. So we're thinking about kids who have sensory needs, kids who need the swinging swing and spinning. And so all of these things are part of what Friendship Park is about. And the foundation of why we want this playground is that all kids can come and play for free and are welcomed in this community at equal level, that all kids can do anything on this playground. And so when we approached the, I just want to clarify one of the things that Jordan said and provide a little bit more information. When we approached the Parks and Rec District, there was massive support, and we have had wonderful conversations with wonderfully supportive people that are great dialogue, but we also need the money, because in my, for my philosophy, there should never be a playground that does, that doesn't have easy access for a wheelchair. All of our playgrounds meet ADA requirements, but to push a wheelchair through wood chips or sand, which is what our playgrounds offer, it's nearly impossible. And, but the problem is that playgrounds like this are expensive, and that's why we need the funding. Parks and Rec has committed $200,000, and that is not, so that money was from development funds, so it's not an excess in using tax dollars. It's part of the development funds that they've set aside. And so we really are looking for support from you, from the city, and from other community members to make this happen. We've been working on this for a while, and we need that push to get it done, so that all kids can come and play. 30 years ago, a kid like Beckett would not be welcome in schools. There were laws against my sister joining schools or being a part of the community, and we have created change, and that change looks like a colorful playground full of kids that are all playing together. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much for that passionate, very passionate story, and I'm sure that sometimes you feel like you're consumed by all of this, but it's great to see that kind of passion.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any comments?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Trustum?
First of all, thank you both for being here this evening. The reason why we requested you to join us was we received your application in the subsidy grant and recognized that the request wasn't to the extent that maybe the city should be participating in this project. So we pulled you off that and asked you to come here this evening because we do want to be a part of this project, and we'll discuss the extent of that here shortly after. But Ms. Carlson, I just want to thank you. I think we're so lucky to have a leader like you in this community.
Thank you.
That's passionate, driven, and clearly very determined. And so I think you are representing an amazing group of people, and that everyone will benefit from a project like this.
Can I, can I give you a little bit of data? So it's estimated that about one in five families support a child with a disability. So 20% of our community needs this playground, but 100% of children would benefit from it. Not just the kids with disabilities, it's all of the other kids that benefit from the kids with disabilities being present.
Absolutely.
And I would agree. I think this is another piece to our puzzle that we keep constructing, our quality-of-life puzzle, and we just keep adding, you know, pieces, and it, I don't know if it'll ever be complete, but we have to add the pieces. And like Mr. Selinger said, at one point, we had the outflow, and we're the opposite now, how do we attract? You know, we stemmed the outflow, now how do we get people to come? And again, a quality-of-life feature that we need to address, and I know, Mr. Gah, you had mentioned earlier when we had talked, we have some property that we have up for sale right now.
Mr. President, can I ask a real quick question?
Sure, sure.
So you have 200 in the bank, 200 from Parks and Rec, and then you have pledges on top of that?
So the, as far as my understanding, and she's been a little bit more involved with the pledges, the, we've got about 180 in the bank and 25-plus in pledges. So the 200 was in the bank and pledges.
There are two groups of pledges. So there is straight capital, let's build this playground. We have also discussed establishing an endowment, and there are pledges that are dedicated to an endowment, so that the burden of fixing an adapted swing is also secure. Or maybe there's something that we didn't think of, and I think we're thinking of a lot of things, but maybe there is something that we didn't think of that perhaps we need to purchase a piece of equipment for. So we're, my vision is that every playground is accessible and usable for children with disabilities. So if the endowment would grow and we would get some security there, we would resurface other playgrounds, or we would adapt other playgrounds, so that a child with a disability doesn't just have one choice, they have multiple choices to go and play. However, even just fixing a swing can make it more usable for a child.
And how much, what level do you need to get to before you can start facilitating some ground cleaning and getting this project going?
So Parks and Rec has talked about doing their surveying of the land that has been discussed to be used. That land is just north of Gum Avenue, which is a beautiful, like, I think it's about seven-acre stretch. There has been public meetings from the Parks and Rec Board, and it's been wildly supported by that neighborhood. It's just situated right on the interstate, too, that will pull and attract visitors, which we also think is great. And there is also an opportunity there, too, if we would have the right pledge for some advertisement, or, you know, working with somebody in that way. So they've talked about surveying to make sure that there's no issues with drainage there shortly, and that would be another great step to show like we're having action. But the rest of it is going to be very difficult to start breaking ground unless we have the funds, because we don't have the means to pay something back. And we want the playground, it'd be very difficult to have a playground without accessible bathrooms, because this is going to be a destination playground. Kids and families are going to go to wherever this is, it's not just going to be in the neighborhood that it's situated. And so having the ability to drink and drain would be great, and so we need the accessible bathrooms. We've discussed a sheltered area similar to the sheltered area at Memorial Park. We first talked about a heated and cooled shelter house, but we have plenty of options for that in Dickinson, but having the ability to have a birthday party or something there would be very attractive.
So, Ms. Carlson, the multi-
Mr. President?
I'm sorry.
The multi-purpose building is what you're talking about there?
Yeah. So the, what is the numbers on that case statement? That was our first draft, and we haven't reprinted. So the total funding that would build this playground is about $1.2 million. That's the updated figure. Now, that is, so that was working with our Parks and Rec District from what knowledge they knew about playground equipment and costs, so that might need to be updated after the about six months that we had that sort of general quote. But that would provide the paving, the playground, the surfacing, the shelter house that's not heated and cooled, so that significantly lowered that cost. And bathrooms.
So 1.2?
1.2.
For phase one.
What's that?
For phase one.
That's all that for 1.2.
Oh, wow.
And Parks and Rec is going to work with you on maintaining the upkeep of it in the future?
So the idea of this is that we would do the work in the fundraising and gift it to Parks and Rec to, for them to do like groundskeeping and maintenance and trash. We had the head of Parks and Rec in Mandan, who had the most recent playground that was very similar to ours, provided such a wealth of information. He said that overall maintenance is really low cost. Their biggest cost is actually trash removal, because kids are using it, and so we're, the Parks and Rec District here is prepared for that. And they've been involved as well with their groundskeeping folks, understanding what this would bring.
Mr. Steiner, you had a question?
Mr. President, first I got a question. Design and engineering, 140,000, has an engineering firm stood up and taken that on for you?
As an in-kind donation?
As an in-kind?
No, not as of yet.
I do know of one engineering firm sitting here in this audience, and I'm going to put him on the spot right now. In fact, I'm going to challenge him, contact all his other peers in the engineering firms in town, if he would step up and want to take this to see if they can help you out on that.
So the only complication is because this does use Parks and Rec dollars, or if it would use public dollars of any sort, the bidding process does have to be a part of the discussion, but we have talked to Parks and Rec about in-kind donations such as, like, concrete or engineering, and there are ways to work through that, so we would work.
I just about got him to verbally commit, and I want to remind him that this is recorded. So I think he's verbally committing that he will help you in this here general direction. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you for stepping up. Number two-
Is there anybody else in the room?
Number two, I know there's been talk about the Domestic Violence Rape Crisis Center building, and that's up for sale, and I couldn't think of a better project to help that building continue to live by taking the funds from that, whatever we sell it for, and use it for this park. Now, if it doesn't sell for 250, which leads me to the next question, do you have a title sponsor yet?
No.
Okay. So if that house sells for 180, 190, or whatever we think it is, that we contribute the balance to get the city of Dixon to be the title sponsor. I think there's a few times in a city's life when they should step up to a plate, we did it with the Veterans Center and so on. I think this would be another outstanding project for the city to take on.
I'm not going to disagree with you, Mr. Steiner. I think this is something that we need. We just have to have Mrs. Carlson work the numbers, and we have set aside some dollars for just this kind of item, but we have funds set aside. So Mr. Gah and Mrs. Carlson can, once we sell that building, I would say that we dedicate those dollars and then find the additional dollars to be the title sponsor.
Mr. President, I know city attorney, or excuse me, administrator Gah actually kind of came up with this idea and talked about also facilitating maybe a dollar-for-dollar match, which would in turn maybe kind of light some fire under some of our community members. So I think if we can talk about integrating that into the proposal as well, whatever we can do to help you guys really get to the finish line for this project, and we've kind of brainstormed a lot of great ideas, so, I mean, we're here to support you and to get this completed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be great, whatever you guys can do to help, and like she kind of mentioned and you mentioned, it's kind of lighting that fire to get this to the finish line, and so your help is greatly appreciated.
And just to let you know, there won't be like a formal resolution this evening, but this will continue during, we have budget talks continuing next week and into the fall, and we will incorporate that, and we will let you know when we come to a final decision how we're going to do this, so.
Thank you for your support.
Well, thank you for your-
Thank you for everything you guys.
President Decker, I do just want to chime in here a little bit on this. There's, I think tonight, quite frankly, if the commission wanted to target a pledge tonight, I think you could do that. If you wanted to make it a dollar-for-dollar match, you could do that. I don't think you should tie the funding source yet. We do have an ordinance in place that lays out when the city sells property where it should go. We as staff can work through that. We might find a better place, and we'll have some gap funding, I think, between that. So if you want to direct us to create a funding plan, you can do so. I wouldn't tie any specific source to it yet.
Well, I, my preference is that we become the title sponsor. And if Commissioners, if you feel that way, the staff can work out the funding mechanisms in the future, but I would, I feel that we should be the title sponsor.
Mr. President, I know we got money in the one-cent sales tax, a pretty good healthy balance.
That would be one source we would look at, yeah.
Let's just close this thing out tonight and make a motion to take 250 out of there, and so these people can get going. Challenge Stark County, challenge Park District for another 50 to get up to the title sponsors. We got the engineers stepping in, another 140.
Well, my suggestion is, well, let's just do the 250 and let them figure out where they want to get, where they want to get the money from.
Just so they know that they got 250 walking out of here.
Yeah, I'm not going to hamstring staff. They can, they can figure out what they need to do. We'll set the total at 250.
I'll hamstring the engineers.
You can do that.
And in your motion, if you wanted to make that matching funds, you should do that. Because I really, that's the idea. When I looked at this the other day, we could, we could give them $250,000, and they still need another $250,000 to go. How about help- How about help them? They can walk up and say, you know, if you give me this, the city's going to match it, and we're going to get there quicker. It helps them be stronger fundraisers, rather than just saying, hey, we want to help you, but we're still not going to close this door. But this, I think that really helps, because when it comes down to it, once they get to the point where the bidding can be discussed, in-kind and other donations, I think, will help close that gap. They've got to be able to talk about that bidding process first.
So would we, we wouldn't cap the match?
You could make a pledge based on matching fees, funds capped at 250, if that's the number you're thinking.
And I would presume it'd be from this date, right? Matching funds granted or received from this.
I just want them to be assured that they'll get $250 from us regardless of the.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think we're all on the same page on that, but I think that gives them some tools to take out into the community and say, we have an opportunity to get up to this amount, help us get there, because we only have this much more to finish. I think that if we just have that language in there and we have an understanding that you're going to get your money, we'll make sure of it, but also to give you some tools to leverage some dollars outside of this.
Well, since we don't have the proper motion crafted, do we want to take this up at the next commission meeting with a proper motion? Just to have how it's structured, the dollar-for-dollar match?
I would remind you that we have a budget session coming up July 10th, perhaps you want to discuss it, and then we could bring it back to the next commission meeting on the 16th.
We'll have it that way. And we'll have a properly constructed motion.
Motions, then, can't we?
Detailed, we'll have a detailed motion.
We can pass the motion at the budget meeting. It's an open.
If you want to, yeah.
Yeah, we'll discuss it, but I would rather have a properly worded motion that spells out what we are going to do as a city, so.
It sounds like you can count us in for $250.
Mr. President, one more comment. I would strongly suggest you go to Stark County. I know that they have a fund or a budget, a balance, with two digits with six zeros behind it. You need to go see them.
Thank you for that. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, President Decker, members of the Commission.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Next item up is public issues of city concern not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the crowd that has any issues that are not on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name. Anyone from the public with any issues not on the agenda? Close this segment of the commission meeting. Commissioners, is there anything you would wish to discuss this evening that wasn't on the agenda? All right. Seeing there's nothing, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.